Thank you. We are waiting on some information. Thank you.
Ask them.
To the body of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you.
I need for you all to make yourself present. Okay.
Okay, good evening. The time is six thirty-five, and I have now called the November third, twenty twenty-five meeting of the common council of the city of Lawrence to order. Roll call. We have nine counselors present. Comments of the council members and any special recognitions or resolutions. Counselors?
I, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to give a special kind of shout out to the DPW and Jim's team. I'm so appreciative of the taking out the trees and on the medians in the sidewalk. It's really made a difference, and I really appreciate the ability to ask and see and see the DPW folks deliver. It's made a difference in my community already. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to give a shout out to the DPW too, the Streets Department. A constituent had contacted me about the sign at David and Forty-Sixth Street being out, and within a couple of days after contacting Mr. Henigan, it was up, and the constituent was really happy because they use it at night when they're driving to help them figure out, you know, to get into their house. So it's really helpful. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, counselors. Anyone else?
Madam President.
Yes.
Real quickly, I want to thank the State Highway Department. The, I turned to them back, oh gosh, right after they did this median project down Pendleton Pike, and explained to them the hardship that they had imposed upon a Coron mobile home and the Fun Time camper across the road. And after a lot of phone calls, emails, and had a meeting with them with Corons and all, we do have a cut now in that median. So now Corons can pull their big, long mobile homes out without having to go down mid-hoffer, and the same with the RVs. And so, anyone's listening from the state, I appreciate your cooperation on that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Counselor Kramer?
Madam President, tonight's discussion is not just about a budget. It's about responsibility. It's about who's willing to make tough decisions and who isn't. This administration brought forward a budget that is larger than last year's, even as revenues are shrinking. A budget that spins down our city's reserve funds to a level that should concern everyone here. Those reserves are what protect this city in hard times and demonstrate financial strength when we seek to bond or seek capital improvements, projects. This administration knew the budget was in balance when it was submitted. They knew it would drain the reserves and make it harder to demonstrate financial stability in the future. This wasn't an oversight. This was a deliberate choice. And now, instead of owning that choice, they want this council to make the tough calls they avoided. The hard decisions they didn't want to make are being handed to us. That's not leadership. Let's be clear that this is the administration's budget. The council did not prepare it. The council did not create the imbalance, and that was on the administration. They need to own that. With SBE one lowering property tax, our revenue is going down. Everyone in this room knows that. The next few years are going to be very tight. When the budget comes up for a vote, I will vote to approve it, but let me be clear that this vote is not an endorsement of how the budget was built. I'm voting to keep this city functioning, not because I believe that it's a responsible budget. This administration chose to spend down reserves. They chose to ignore warnings, and they've chose to deflect rather than make hard decisions. They chose to sabotage this council when we tried to hire an outside advisor. When times are tough, we need transparency, honesty, and leadership, who is willing to say no when that is the responsible answer. Lawrence deserves better short-term fixes rather than hollow budgets. It deserves a city of government that tells the truth about where we stand financially and a plan that protects our future, not just our present. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Anyone else?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Echo what Counselor Kramer said. I have a really big concern, and I'm really hesitant to vote for this budget. And we are in a shortfall. Where the budget was in the red, we're having to rely on money that's in the reserves. That would be probably at the rate we're going, will be depleted year after next. And then where are we? And my stance is, there's a lot of hard decisions, and I think that there could have been some decisions made that would, that would help solve this problem. I don't think, I don't think there was enough fat in the administration's, in the proposed budget that's going to completely make the budget completely even or balance the budget. But I think it's, it's up to us to do something about it, or to try to do as much as we can in trying to get it as close as we can. In the very first year of this administration, we, we raised property taxes. Then next year, we raised wheel tax. There's talk now about raising income tax. I voted on, or voted against the first two. I'm going to vote against the income tax until I know that this administration has done everything it can do to get as lean as it possibly can before we go back to the voters or the citizens and say, hey, we need more money. I think that's inherently irresponsible of us. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Wells.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Jennings.
This budget has been chaotic, chaotic to say the least. Just like last year, the administration failed to provide a timely or transparent financial information. We've dealt with delayed meetings, unanswered questions, and a total lack of communication from the mayor's office. Mayor Deb Whitfield has now delivered two consecutive budgets that are late with incomplete information and lingering questions. Residents need to know this. The twenty-sixth budget proposes spending three point five million dollars more in the general fund expenditures than it collects in revenues relying on revenues to fill the gap. This is not sustainable. It raises serious concerns about the long-term stability of our city's finances. The administration also depends heavily on one point six million dollars in new transfers from our water, sewer, and Fort Harrison reuse authorities. A jump from three point nine million in twenty-five to five million in twenty-six. These transfers may balance the books temporarily, but they hide the deeper structural issues in the general fund and divert critical resources that may, I'm sorry, that divert critical resources away from utilities and infrastructure projects. While I fully support our public safety departments, these raising costs outlined in the budget will continue to strain our limited resources long term. Let me be clear. While I, while I will vote for this budget, not because I believe that it's fiscally sound, it is not, but to ensure the essential, but it, but to ensure that the essential city operations continue without disruption. But make no mistake, I am voting, while I am voting, while I, while I will vote yes, holding my nose. I'm holding my nose because the budget stinks, the process stinks, the lack of transparency from the administration stinks, and the refusal of the administration to work in good faith with the council is unacceptable. Why is it when the council sought independent financial advisory to better prepare for this budget process, the mayor vetoed the contract and acted with open hostility toward the consulting firm we tried to hire? That is not collaboration. That's obstruction and a slap in the face to everyone who believes in good governance. Finally, the mayor has made it clear she's unwilling to make the tough, reasonable adjustments needed to manage the city's finances. Instead, she's chosen to submit an unbalanced budget that will further spend down our resources and weaken the city's fiscal position. And leave future councils and administrations to clean up the mess. Lawrence, Lawrence residents deserve better. You deserve honest leadership, transparency, and a plan to protect our city's financial future. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, counselor. Moving on, can I, excuse me, the next agenda item is the minutes of the regular meeting for October the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Are there any questions or corrections?
I'd like to make a, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Okay. Second. Oh, you got to, the minutes are not up. The vouchers are up.
Oh, I thought she said the minutes. I'm sorry. I was listening.
Yeah, I did.
Approval minutes. That's what she said.
Oh, I understand.
Oh, oh, oh. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. Counselor Giles, can you now approve?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Okay, you got to push your.
Repetitive motion?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Jennings and Counselor Giles. We have a second. Is, any further discussion? We will now proceed to vote. Thank you, counselors. We have one hundred percent. We will now have the signing of the vouchers and approvals for claims for October the sixth. Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Thank you, counselors. Thank you, callers. Liz made the motion.
Did you push the screen? We'll just.
Thank you, counselor. Do we have any further discussions? We will now proceed to vote. We have one hundred percent. Mm-hmm. For November the third today. Okay, do I wait for that to go away? Okay. Thank you. Next, we will have signing of the vouchers and approval of claims for November the third. Do we have any discussion or motion for November the third? Thank you, counselors. Any further discussions? We now proceed to vote. Thank you, everyone. One hundred percent. At this time, we're going to make a change in the agenda, and we're going to have the public hearing for twenty-five dash Z O N dash oh three dash eight oh oh six. Madam Clerk, would you please read the petition number, address, and request for the record?
Petition number twenty-five dash Z O N dash oh three. Title is eighty oh six and eighty sixteen Sweet Lane portions rezoning petition. The public hearing has been advertised and is now open.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Counsel, before we proceed with the public hearing, I would like to ask for a motion to consider the following rules governing the public hearing. One, petitioner's presentation must not exceed ten minutes. The combined total time for all members of the public speaking in favor is ten minutes. The combined total time limit for all members of the public speaking against is ten minutes. There shall be a five-minute time limit regarding additional comments from the petitioner. There should be a combined five-minute time limit on all additional comments from the members of the public speaking. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second. Thank you, counselors. Further, any further discussion amongst the counselors? We will now proceed to vote. A voice vote? Yeah. Okay. Madam Clerk said it will be a voice vote. Can I have Counselor Giles?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Counselor Wells.
This is the vote on adopting the budget?
No.
That's what it says on the screen.
This is the public hearing.
Public hearing.
That's what I thought. That's what, quit reading the screen. Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Chavis?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor Kramer.
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson.
Aye.
Counselor Jennings?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor Freeman.
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor Crone.
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Masua.
Aye.
Thank you. One hundred percent. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. The floor is now open for the petitioner to present the rezoning petition to the common counsor, council.
Can I use the overhead? I use that.
Sure.
There it is. All right.
You have to adjust it.
Does it come down?
Yeah, adjust that up a little bit. There you go. Yeah.
There we go.
All right.
Trying to make north of the top.
Yeah. There you go.
There you go. All right. For the record, Russell, Russell Brown, attorney with the law firm of Clark Quinn, business address three twenty North Meridian Street, Suite eleven hundred. Tonight, what's before you is, I hope, a relatively straightforward and easy to understand request. If you'll remember, last November, we were here on two rezoning petitions. One was to rezone about eleven acres from SU one to D two. That was approved by this council unanimously. There was also another petition, approximately three acres, that was to rezone property from SU one to a CS district. That was denied. Following those actions by this council, my client, Sweets, went ahead and moved forward with acquisition of all approximately fifteen acres of this property, which is formerly owned by Holy Spirit Lutheran Church. What's on the screen shows you kind of where we're at today. So since that time, we've had two other public hearings, and we've moved forward with a variance petition related to allowing subdivision without any street frontage, lots without any street frontage on a public right-of-way. Counselor Crone was at that hearing. That passed the BZA, the Lawrence BZA unanimously. Following that request, we moved forward with a plat petition heard by the Marion County Plat Committee that replatted approximately, approximately thirteen acres into four lots served by a common drive. So what I've got on the screen here is the area that was replatted. Kind of the area in the orange was, is what was replatted as part of that replat petition that went down, went downtown. The green area is an area that's been retained by the suites for their property. They live in the house that's shown here on the, on the map. They retained that green area for that parcel, so that is part of their homestead, and they have created four lots in this area. Presumably, the goal is to have their children build and live on homes that are next door to them. What we're here tonight, about tonight, is the area that's crosshatched here. That is approximately two point oh four nine acres. That was part of the petition that was sought to be rezoned to CS last year. We are asking that that be zoned to D two tonight. So be moved from SU one to D two to allow those lots, we have, I've outlined the lots here in black. So we have lot one, two, three, and four, and this kind of is the drive, the common drive that serves those four lots. So the request tonight before you is to rezone this area shaded here in the crosshatch to D two. That will allow you to have residential structures constructed on that property and two, no more than two. So we have four lots, and this would allow, this is hopefully the final step, to allow Mr. and Mrs. Sweet to continue to build these homes. There is a home under construction on the property currently following the public hearings that we went through this last year. So, request tonight is SU one to D two for two point oh four nine acres. I have heard no remonstrance, no concerns related to this request. My client has heard none, and Renee indicated that the city's offices has received none as well. So, and obviously, there's no one here to remonstrate about this petition tonight. So, that is our request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Russell, if I may, this property is going to have four separate homes on it, correct?
Correct. Up to the four.
Would these, would these four homes be deeded individually?
They're platted as separate lots, so they can be deeded individually to individual homeowners. Yes, sir.
So my concern would be, this common driveway is going to belong to which home?
It is a common area, so it's owned, as there are multiple neighborhoods in Lawrence that are served by a private drive. This is a private drive that will serve those four. That matter's already been considered and approved by the Plat Committee.
So what would, what about the utilities, like the water and all that? They would have separate meters?
Yes. These, these are currently owned by my clients, but ultimately will be owned through, I don't know, I'm not going to get into their family business, but ultimately will be owned by their children. With their, they will have their individual homes on those properties. With their, they will have their individual homes on those properties.
Well, I guess I'm a little bit confused or a little bit in question about this common driveway. I mean, what happens way down the road when, you know, you, me, and this gentleman are all long gone, and these houses still exist? And then possibly, you know, the children want to sell them to whoever?
That private, that private drive, drive is part of a subdivision, a legally established and recorded subdivision. It has obligations to maintain that private drive, so that private drive will be in perpetuity unless the four lot owners agree otherwise. That will be maintained for that purpose.
So it would be sort of like a, it would be like some sort of a fund for, like a maintenance fund for this?
Yeah, it would be in the same way that I have to pay for common area expenses for the courtyard that's out in front of my home a couple of blocks away. They would pay for common area expenses that would be presumably split equally between those four lots.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Attorney Brown?
Yes.
Those homes could be sold individually by the children at any time in the future?
Yeah, they're, they're, these are all individual lots, just like the lot I live on was once part of a bigger parcel, was subdivided down, and then sold to me.
What about emergency, like fire? Can a fire truck get down the driveway? Is there, is there water, or is it going to be water available to be up to?
Again, those are all Plat Committee questions. Those, this has been through and been approved by the Plat Committee. We're here tonight to talk about that, two acres. But yes, that's all meets requirements of the City of Lawrence and the City of Indianapolis related to access, distance to fire, to fire hydrants, et cetera.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do have just one question about the two acres of land and the development. Excuse my ignorance, because I'm not extremely familiar with the exact confines, but I'm always worried about stormwater runoff, pours. This land was all undeveloped, right, you know, before. And so I'm sure you guys have vetted, but with that, so with the land drainage pours, can you just speak to, speak to a little bit of that as far as?
Yeah, anytime in Marion County you disturb more than one-tenth of an acre, I'm sorry, yeah, one-tenth of an acre, then you have to have a drainage plan that has to be reviewed, approved, designed, and built as part of that development. There is, there is a kind of, this shows us all as if it was land, but much of it is, I think I have something that shows you kind of the pond area. So there is an existing pond.
That's what I thought. This is the, this is the land that they were going to do the bed and breakfasts in, wasn't it like two sides and split by a creek or some, you know, I'm sorry, I get confused.
The red area here, shown here, is Dr. Durden's property, that the bed and breakfast is permitted as a C S zoning. We brought before you, the yellow, last year, the yellow area?
Uh-huh.
And the area that's crosshatched. That was the request to expand his use. That was denied by the council.
Right, okay.
So, so the, what happened is the Sweets went ahead and closed on all of that. The, the yellow area is not subject to tonight's petition, so it's retaining that S U one classification. But the, this area is.
Oh, the yellow area is excluded?
The yellow area is excluded, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, that little sliver right there.
Crosshatched area, yeah.
Okay, when you, I, I got, I thought the yellow was what you were, what you were.
No, we're only doing the crosshatched area.
Okay.
So the reason that we have to be here tonight is because we can't build any residential structures on an S U one zone classification. So currently, under zoning, this is an unbuildable lot.
Okay. And so the bed and breakfast is still on the other side there?
It's still on the other side. That's on the, that's on the red.
And it was like some, when the woods or something else, that bed and breakfast, if I remember right, so that's, that's where those lines are that feeds into the backside of it?
Yeah, that's the backside.
Okay, I remember, okay, good, good. I'm glad to see that they're building homes there. That's great. Well, thank you, I support this.
Okay. Any other questions for Attorney Brown? Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to call those in favor of the petition to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. You have ten minutes.
There's none.
In favor of the petition?
They have none.
Okay, second, I would like to call any remonstrators who would like to provide public comment against the rezoning petition. You have ten minutes to speak. Okay, none? All right. Madam Clerk, are there any comments from the public on the Microsoft team? There are not. None? Okay, thank you. Do any council members have any further questions or comments relating to the rezoning petition? None? Thank you. I understand that a representative is here to present the City of Lawrence staff report on rezoning petition number twenty-five dash Z O N dash oh three. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Renee Rafle, Director of Public Works. Address, nine thousand one East Fifty-Ninth Street, Suite two oh five. The city is in favor of this. As Mr. Brown explained, they are just wanting to do that little sliver of lot four and lot, I'm sorry, lot one and two. You're correct, that was part of the doctor's plan. The yellow area is still going to remain S U one. So if they want to do anything with that area, they will have to come back before this council or file for a variance, one or the other. We're ready to release the plan. I've got the plans on my desk, waiting for you guys to rezone. So for that house to be built, we did review a stormwater plan. All of that's in line. There's four different meters for four different lots, four different sewer lines. There's easements granted for all of that. It's just like any other H O A. Those four lots will be their own H O A. And they'll have to make decisions on how they improve that driveway. It's all private. The city has no maintenance responsibilities on that.
Renee?
Yes.
Down the drive, though, would there not have to be a main sewer and a main water line?
So there's sanitary sewer behind the property, so they're all going to be connecting behind.
Behind?
And there are easements for their sewer lines to get back there. There's a main back there, I believe it's a twelve-inch. And then water's coming from Seventy-Ninth Street.
Okay, so there wouldn't be anything down that shared driveway then, apparently?
They are going to have water lines, but the driveway doesn't take up all three, there were three driveways going up to those three parcels that were zoned S U one. And they didn't, the driveways, the legal width, twenty feet. So there's still property on both sides where they'll have those water meters.
Okay.
The grassy area like it's supposed to be.
And the city's going to provide that to the house, or to the, to a meter, I assume?
No, no, we don't provide it. We allow them to tap our water main. We make the tap.
Oh, okay, so it's up to the owner?
They put in their own pit, we provide the meter.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you know what? It's okay.
Renee, come back.
No, no, it's okay, it's okay.
Okay.
It's okay, it's okay, no.
Yeah, yes. Finally, prior to the closing of the public hearing, I would like to provide a final opportunity for a petitioner and members of the public to come forward to the podium and respond to any of the previous comments relating to the rezoning of this petition. You have five minutes.
I will not use five minutes. I was going to simply say that that drive, though on my little diagram looked narrow, it is seventy-foot in width. So it is a wide right-of-way. I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out.
It goes both ways.
Yeah, so you can allow for, as Renee pointed out, you can allow for your water main to be outside of the paved area, your water to be outside that paved area.
Okay.
Other than that, I appreciate your, first of all, I appreciate you bumping us up on the agenda. And secondly, I appreciate your thoughtful consideration and approval tonight.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Do councilors have any questions or comments? Okay, say none? Is none? Vote. We had a motion made and seconded. Okay. It's passed. Thank you, councilors. Yeah, I got to go back. Now, will we go back to the agenda? And we're going to pick up with reports of committees. Any committees with reports, councilors?
The committee of the whole.
Okay, pardon me?
The only meeting we have is the committee of the whole.
Yeah. Unfinished business. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the ordinance into the record?
Proposal number three, twenty twenty-five, An Ordnance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, amending Title I, Article Two, Chapter Five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lawrence, Indiana.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This proposal was referred to the Committee of the Whole for consideration and recommendation to the council and received a favorable recommendation. We would now, we would now need to consider a motion to approve Proposal Three, twenty twenty-five. Okay, no, we have one motion. We have a second. Thank you, councilors.
Discussion.
We wouldn't do, any further discussion? We now proceed to a vote.
What's in the Code of Ordinances, both?
This is on Proposal Three.
Three, Code of Ordinances.
Excuse me, I, I'd like to, I'd like to clarify something.
Yeah.
That, I, I believe that was in committee still. That, that hasn't been recommended out of committee.
This is for Article Two, Code of Ordinances.
I thought it was out of committee. It's out of.
It's been out, it came out of committee. Thank you. We're going to take about ten minutes.
All right, come on, let's go in the back and do this. I'm.
We're going to take a recess and, and research the CBA status.
Who's the co-committee?
Thank you.
I think y'all need to double check.
We're going to take about ten minutes.
All right, come on, let's go in the back and do this. I'm. 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 I'm.
The last meeting, we tabled it.
I'm. I'm. I'm.
Okay, one moment, please.
I'm. 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 I'm.
Thank you, sorry for that. Okay, proposal number three. We researched it and it is still in the committee as a whole. It was tabled. So it has not been referred to the council yet. And proposal six, Madam Clerk, can you read it into record? Oh, we have to, I'm sorry, we have to be moved.
Right, I was making a motion, it was drawn, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have to remove the motion.
Okay, so Madam Chair, for the record, I would like to reflect that I've withdrawn my motion due to it being in, still in tabled in committee.
Okay.
Madam President, I retract my second.
Okay, thank you, councilors. Now we'll move on to proposal number six. Madam Clerk, can you read that one into record?
Proposal number six, 2025, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, amending Title Three, Article Three, Chapter thirteen of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, concerning graffiti elimination.
This proposal was referred to the committee as a whole and was tabled and has not yet been referred to the council. Proposal number seven, Madam Clerk, could you read that one into record?
Proposal number seven, 2025, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, adopting a code of ethics.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The ordinance remains before the committee, co-committee, for consideration and recommendation to the council. Proposal number eight, Madam Clerk, would you read into record?
Let me go back, let me go back.
Proposal number eight, 2025, an ordinance fixing compensation for elected officials for the city of Lawrence, Indiana, for the year 2026 and providing a time when the same shall take effect.
Okay. A motion for final approval of Proposal Eight, 2025. We would now need to consider a motion to approve Proposal Eight, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Hold on, discussion.
Yeah.
Well, we got a motion.
We have a discussion.
Yeah, motion.
Yeah.
I'll second it so we can get to all this here.
Second, it's been, um, motion is, okay, thank you.
All right, so.
Proposal, yes, for discussion. Go to Councilor Giles.
So when we discussed, if I remember correctly, when we discussed the elected officials' salary increase, you know, salary increase or not, it was connected to the 3% raise to the civilians. I believe when we had the calculation of how much it was going to cost us to give the civilian increase, the elected official increase was in that as well. I don't know if I want to make sure that that is, um, is that correct when we had that in the meeting?
No, you did ask us if you take the elected official out.
I didn't. I asked you that the portion was so small that it didn't have, it didn't make, it didn't move the needle on the, if you gave the salary increase, I thought you were saying that when the number you gave me had that in there, it didn't move the needle much.
No, we only had to, you had told us to take it out. But you said that doesn't, so.
Excuse me, Terry, could you please come to the podium?
I think initially you had asked us to take out all the elected officials and you said because the amount was so small and because I think you was trying to make sure that you would accommodate Latrice, that it was enough, it, it wouldn't make a much difference if you actually included them.
Right, that's what, that's, okay, so that was my understanding. I'm sorry, I want to make sure we're saying it right. So when we're up here, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm looking at, like, it's, it's, it's separate from the, from the civilian, from the civilian raise here, but I thought when we discussed it, we discussed it together because I was concerned about price of living, price of living incre, price of living increase. And so how do we, um, it's one of those things where I'm not comfortable with elected official increase alone, but if we're going to give the 3% increase to the civilian side and it's pennies on the dollar, then we need to include that into, into the, into the deal. That's what I'm trying to, 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 to understand.
I think, yes, you, what you initially had, we thought, is what you thought is that because the civilian's portion was so small that you, in order to accommodate Latrice because she was elected, that it wouldn't make much difference.
But what I'm saying is you put me in a situation where I vote against this, I feel like I'm voting against the civilian raise.
No, well, I don't, I don't.
That's separate.
No, I don't see that.
Can I, can I?
I think that's.
Yes, Madam, um, Councilor. I think that you are right that the, the elected official, uh, 3% on roughly $153,000 is about $5,000. So it is, it is a negligible amount, but for me personally, um, every little bit that, um, whether it's negligible or not, this money is coming from our cash reserves. So I would not be in favor of elected official raises for that reason. We don't have the money in the budget to cover the civilian raises, less than on. Adding that on top of it, I would rather give the civilians a raise and forego a raise as an elected official, even if it just takes a little burden off of the cash reserves.
That makes sense.
I know it's not a lot, but 5,000 here, 5,000 there, 10,000 here, it adds up.
Well, then we're out of parity, so then we all, remember, we had a place where if we don't give those incremental raises and then we're, then we're way out and then we have those jumps. I mean, you're right, the $5,000 doesn't make a difference, it's not going to shake anything, but it, it keeps everything moving in the right direction, but, you know.
I think, Councilors, what we also had initially proposed is that we would do a bonus for 2025.
I'm totally against that myself.
The bonus in 2025 would, that because we already have a bonus reflected in the budget for 2025, if we don't give it in 2025 or a bonus or anything, it's going to revert into our reserves and so.
And then you can give a raise.
Because we do not, we did not build an increase into the raises, into the salaries for 2026, then we do not have it in our budget for a raise in 2026.
Right, but if you don't give the bonus portion this year, right, which I thought we had, I don't remember voting for a bonus, maybe I'm wrong, but, um, but if you forego the bonus in, at the end of the year, if you forego the bonus in '25, right, um, then, then that would feed it, that goes back to the general fund, right?
We don't, yeah.
Right, and then any appropriation that we would get comes out of the general fund, right? So that would mean that 3% would go back into the general fund from '25 and then we could pull another 2%, we could pull another, then we could give that raise, we could give them a 3% raise instead of a bo, instead of a bonus and, so just pull it to '26 and give them a raise. See what I'm saying? If you got, if you got 3% in your budget right now that was supposed to be for a bonus, then when we pull our appropriation in the first of the year, just give them a raise.
With that same 3%.
With that same 3%.
Okay, so that 3%, yeah, is an ongoing 3%, but yes, it's, it's not billed into the 2026 budget, so you would have to ask for an additional.
Appropriation, right, right, we would have to ask for appropriation to give a pay re, you know, a actual salary increase.
Correct.
Right, right, and a cost of living salary increase across the board.
And unless, of course, if we, tonight, if we add the 3% into the salary ordinance, then we're saying that we're approving 3% salary increase for 2026 for cost of living and that money would have to come out of the budget somewhere.
No.
Right? Well, no, if, not if it's, it's, we do it in the salary ordinance.
It's not appropriated.
So we would have to still do the appropriation and not be able to include the reversion. So either way, we need the appropriation.
Correct.
So step one, approve the salary ordinance for the 3%, if that's what our intentions are, and then step two, come January 1st, we'll need to do an additional appropriation at which time the reverted funds from 2025 that weren't used for the pay increase in 2025 could cover that. Because it's more, it's actually more because we did it on all positions, right?
Right.
So it's a bigger number.
Right. Because some positions have been cut.
Those positions.
Well, they're not being budgeted, they haven't been budgeted.
They haven't been budgeted.
For '26.
For '26, they haven't been budgeted.
But they were budgeted in '25.
They were budgeted in '25.
So the number should be bigger.
Right, so we should be good to give a salary.
For '26, what about seven and 28?
Well, we can't worry about that right now.
Yeah.
I mean, we're just voting on '26.
I'm saying that the money flows over, so the money's there in the fund and let people get their salary increases on the civil side.
Right now, we're, can, can I do point of order because right now we're on the, on the civil, elected official proposal?
Yeah.
Madam President, if I may.
Yes.
I did have one final question.
Can't hear you.
Madam, if I may, I did have one more question for the Controller. Sorry, I tried to catch you. Just to clear up any confusion, can you verify if currently Proposal Number Six does include a pay raise for specifically the clerk or is it, you didn't include any pay raises at all for any elected officials?
There's no pay raises included in the salary ordinance, there is no pay raise included in the 2026 budget.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, appreciate it.
Okay. A motion was made and it was seconded.
So President Robinson, members of the council, you do have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance as presented. To the extent you want to add in a 3% raise, you'll need to take a motion to amend the ordinance as presented and then your vote would be on the ordinance as amended. So there will be two motions to the extent you want to add the 3%.
But to accept this, but to, but to accept this motion is to not.
Yes.
To not do a 3%, it's not to give a raise.
That's correct, as presented, it is not with the 3%.
Right.
Is this going to be a voice?
A voice, so what do we do with this one?
Yeah.
Okay. A voice vote not to do the increase. Can we get a motion, a voice to amend?
Madam President, if I may, I would move that we would amend the ordinance to include a 3% raise for the clerk.
I would second that, if we can do that.
So the motion has been made and seconded to amend Proposal Number Eight, 2025, to add a 3% increase to the line item for the city clerk.
Only.
Only.
Only, yes.
Now we would do a verbal with the discussion first. Any discussion? Anyone?
I just wanted to say for the record, I think that it serves a bad, even if, even though it's a little bit of money for us to try to, you know, to get a raise of any kind, you know, so I would vote, I would have voted against that, but for, for her.
Okay, anyone else? Discussion, okay, now we'll do a vote, verbal vote, starting with Councilor Giles.
Uh, yea.
Councilor Wells.
Yea.
Councilor Chavis.
Yea.
Councilor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson, yes. Councilor Jennings.
Aye.
Councilor Freeman.
Yes.
Councilor Crone.
Yes.
Councilor Massur.
Yes.
Thank you, we have 1% and passed. Now we will vote on the proposal as amended. Is that to go verbal, we? On that ballot, okay. It's the ballot on the board.
Right.
Yes.
This is for the amendment.
Yes.
As amended.
Mm-hmm.
Proposal as amended. Passes, thank you, councilors. Okay. Next we will have Proposal Number Nine, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please read into record?
Proposal Number Nine, 2025, an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the police department and the fire department for the year 2026.
Do we have a motion? Thank you, councilors, thank you so much. We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Okay, uh, we will proceed to vote. It passed, thank you, councilors. Proposal Number Ten, Madam Clerk, would you read into record?
Proposal Number Ten, 2025, an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2026.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A motion to approve amendment.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend Proposal Number Ten, 2025, to include a 3% pay increase for appointed officers, employees of the city of Lawrence for the 2026 budget. This is, um, it is the, the will of this council and the intent of this council for this 3% to be a cost of living adjustment.
Thank you, Madam.
You didn't put your motion, I put the button and you clicked it.
No, it's already been said.
Well, she, she didn't click it, I didn't, it's.
She's, he's got it. What'd you say? This is the amendment, okay, we got the second.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? Any discussion at all, councilors? Okay, we will have to do a voice vote on this amendment. Councilor Giles.
Yes.
Councilor Wells.
Yes.
Councilor Chavis.
Yes.
Councilor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson, yes. Councilor Jennings.
Aye.
Councilor Freeman.
Yes.
Councilor Crone.
Yes.
Councilor Massur.
Yes.
Thank you, councilors.
We have 1%.
Yep.
Passed. Motion to approve.
Motion.
For these positions, that's what I was looking for, this, thank you.
Now we have to get clarification on the positions, on the salary ordinance, the ones that the counselor had made selection of. The following positions have been removed, right?
I would like to make a motion to remove the following positions.
Motion to remove the following positions.
I'll make the motion.
You make the motion.
And can you read the position?
I need to list these positions. The positions that have been removed are deputy chief of staff, public information officer, city planner, city quartermaster, engineer tech, grant coordinator, information technology coordinator, recreation assistant, recreation coordinator, staff accountant. Those positions have been removed by the council.
Well, there's a motion, motion on the floor to remove those positions from the salary ordinance.
Thank you, Councilor, second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor, now we'll do a voice.
Can we have discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just want to say for, um, the record that these positions are unfilled, um, the, we are on a hiring freeze and we did confirm with the administration that these positions were not budgeted for in 2026, therefore there was no intent to fill those positions. So no one lost their job or anything like that, it's just that these are unfilled and unbudgeted positions that we are going to remove until such time that we can afford to fund them and add them back in the future.
Okay. Controller, can you come forward for a minute, please? Can you confirm that the positions that we have removed were indeed vacant and not budgeted for?
Yes, Madam President, I sat at my desk and we.
I can't hear you.
Yes, we did do that, we removed those positions from the salary ordinance as you requested.
Okay, now I noticed that public information officer was, was still left on your list that you submitted tonight. Was there a reason?
Public information officer. Jeanette.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Ms. Jeanette.
Jeanette Jackson, human resources director, some individuals are serving in dual positions, so there is another person also has that position title, but also position title, just not. not budgeted for. It just has the title.
He has the title.
Correct.
You can do that.
So, as presented on the amendment, that position was removed to the extent you want to include that position, you'll just need to make sure that the motion does not include that position as a removed position.
Right, because that's what they, right.
Any further discussion on that one? Because this one does have someone in-
So, what, which title does the, the current employee go by? Which title do they use?
It's the coordinator.
It's either the Chief of Staff or the, excuse me, the Director of Communications for Fund Development.
Okay, yeah, I, I would recommend that we go ahead and remove that. On the amended-
Any further discussion on that one? Okay.
Right. So, as presented, that position is removed in the motion to amend, which will now be considered.
Okay. Thank you, ladies.
We're demanding to bring it back?
No.
No, once you-
Just, okay. Okay, thank you, ladies. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on the, what we just did? Okay, now, we're going to do a verbal, voice, voice vote on this amendment. Councilor Giles.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilor Wells.
Yes.
Councilor Chavis.
Yes.
Councilor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson, yes. Councilor Jennings.
Aye.
Councilor Freeman.
Yes.
Councilor Crowe.
Yes.
Councilor Massur.
Yes.
Thank you, councilors. We have one hundred percent on that one?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the amended version of Proposal Number Ten, 2025.
Second.
Thank you, councilors. Now, any discussion? Okay, we will now do a vote. We're going to do a verbal. We would do the, we will vote on the monitor. Yes. Okay, so, let Latrice get set up. Okay. Thank you. It passed. One hundred percent. Thank you, councilors. The next agenda item under Unfinished Business is Proposal Eleven. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
That's adoption of the budget, which is Form Four.
Form Four.
Form Four.
She needs to present that. Madam Clerk, now, Controller. Come forward, please. We need you to present Form Four.
Oh, okay. Should have put it on the project.
It's already on there.
Yeah, it's on that, it's on that table.
Does she have to push that thing?
He's supposed to make it public so that everyone can see it.
Oh, okay.
I think he's- Okay, he's right behind you. Which one?
Podium camera. Put right here, Terry. You said podium camera. There you go.
Ooh, goodness.
All right. That's some transparency there. Wish I'd have had that a few years ago.
That's, that is it.
You're getting seats. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the whole page.
Okay, make sure that the change- Uh-uh.
It's not in focus.
It's pretty good.
Controller, Terry, could you tell, could you share with us if there were any changes between Form Three and Form Four?
Three and Four.
I have a copy of Three if you want to look at it.
I didn't print, yeah, I do have Three.
You do, okay.
I think I do. This, um, budget reflects all your cuts that you had, um, that you made either on, was it Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Friday, so.
It's Thursday when we had the committee meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And this is what we-
I think it reflects like seven hundred and twenty-five thousand or something like that.
Seven hundred and forty-five thousand.
Seven forty-five.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see.
So, we went through and we actually changed, uh, what was proposed to, um, we changed the numbers. So, we went through Gateway and made the changes. So, what was initially proposed was changed to what your, uh, budget cuts reflected.
Councilor Giles.
Mm-hmm.
Look closer.
Can you look at what's there, Charles Charles? Thank you, sir.
I can't see it that far. Me either.
It looks like it's blurred from here.
Yes.
Will be mostly the general fund.
Yes, that makes sense. That makes sense. Straight out the general fund. Straight out the general fund. Straight out the general fund, off the number, straight out the general fund. And then, eighty's cut, I don't know, maybe, uh, fourteen, I'm in a strange service funds because all of them were inter, they were intercut. But, but the three off, the big seven, it right off the top.
Okay.
Right off the top.
All right.
Because that was the big deal, it's coming right out, it's coming right off the top. And that's what we're trying to save, is the general fund. Trying to save it. Fortunately, we have reserves to have.
Mm-hmm.
I'm so thankful. I spent a lot of political clout to have those, have those reserves for us to use now. Some of you guys remember. Click it. Click it. That's not a whole lot of money. Oh, it's right here.
And these were not filled positions, right?
Still here. Well, the general, it looked wrong.
Yeah, that's what we-
And I'm still, I'm holding you guys accountable. I hold on to it.
No, they're not. The first one, some of those ones, we got out. In the headlines. Right.
We don't put anybody in the numbers.
Any discussion on Form Four for any of the councilors? Questions for the controller? Yes, sir.
I don't have any questions for the controller, whether, I want to make a po, a very positive comment. I'm very, very, you're, it was delight that we were able to do this. We were able to get here. We're not growling and fighting and spitting. We made those tough cuts together, and, um, I'm very, very pleased with, also, I want to thank the folks over here at Crowe. I think that, uh, it started off rocky, but I am very proud of the efforts and the work that we've done and that we'll have to continue to do in '26 and '27. Uh, I'm just very, very, uh, proud of, of the council. Uh, it was rocky with the administration. It's not perfect, but it's my opinion that, um, we've gotten here. And, and, and this is the tenth budget I've been a part of, and probably seven out of the ten have been very rocky. So, I'm, 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 I'm happy that, uh, uh, that we got here in a more collaborative, uh, way. I truly, I truly am. We got a lot of work to do. You might be mad at me tomorrow, but today, I'm glad we're here.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Proposal Number Eleven. No.
Yes.
That we approve the Form Four as submitted and as displayed.
I'll second that.
It'll be just a verbal.
Yeah.
The amendment, yeah. Can we have a second? Second? Thank you, Counselor. And now, we will take off any discussion? Okay, now, we will do a verbal vote on the amendment, starting with Councilor Giles.
Aye. Yes.
Councilor Wells.
No.
Councilor Kramer. Chavis?
Yes.
Councilor Kramer.
No.
Councilor Robinson, yes. Councilor Jennings.
No.
Councilor Freeman.
No.
Councilor Crowe.
Yes.
Councilor Massur.
Yes.
So, how many is that? Five, four. It passed.
Five to four.
Five to four. It passed.
Yeah.
It passed. The amendment.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended version of the Form Four.
Okay. Councilor Giles.
Aye. Oh, do we get a second? Oh, I'll second it.
Second, okay.
Yeah. Excited to vote.
Any discussion?
The whole budget.
The amended?
Yeah.
Now, we will vote on the amendment. No. She can't do it on the screen?
No, because we have so many.
I can't do it. Okay. It has to be a voice?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
On this amendment? Councilor Giles? On the budget as amended.
As amended. Aye.
Councilor Wells.
No.
Councilor Chavis.
Yes.
Councilor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson, yes. Councilor Jennings.
Aye.
Councilor Freeman.
No.
Councilor Crowe.
Yes.
Councilor Massur.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselors, seven to two.
Seven to two. It passed. Do we have another one? No, no, you don't. No, that is, that was the budget. Okay, moving right along.
Mm-hmm.
Next, we will have- Comments from the administration.
Good evening, councilors. On behalf of the administration, we'd like to thank you very much for your work on this budget. In the best of times, the budget is a very arduous process, but we're not in the best of times here in the state of Indiana. No local unit of government, uh, is in good times right now. But thank you very much for your work, and especially to those who attended the work sessions and for your input. Uh, as Councilman Giles has stated this evening, we agree, there's a lot of work ahead. Every unit of government in the state of Indiana, uh, has a lot of work ahead. So, thank you very much, and we look forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the administration? Thank you. Next, we will have comments from the citizens, and it shall be limited to three minutes.
Go get the sheet in the back. I can go get it.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Giles.
So, you limited as to how many votes you can do?
No.
No, but it was, a lot of this was like, well, we moved it from this to that.
Oh, okay.
And then, I think just before, we had somebody that already made a motion for second, but then, like, Mr. McCaffrey, he had a motion, and I couldn't-
Oh, okay. Thank you, sir. Um, comments? J.D. Massur?
Thank you, Madam President, councilors. Uh, J.D. Massur, six-two-zero-three, Carrington Drive. I'd like to thank you all for all your hard work and giving me my, my wife back, because she's been working on this budget for longer than I can remember. As far as Lawrence is concerned, I know we like to look at a budget as a static thing, but from my perspective, it, it, it moves. And so, in Lawrence, we're blessed and burdened with a couple of different things here. We have DFAST, five thousand rate-paying jobs, but no tax revenue from that property. We have the National Guard Armory, jobs, charging stations, no tax revenue from that particular parcel. The PX Commissary, same thing. Jobs, attracts visitors, no revenue to the city from that. No tax revenues from the armed forces, revenue was, uh, readiness center. No tax revenues from the State Park, the Inn, the Golf Course, the Pete and Alice Eye Golf Center that just got built. They all attract revenues, but no tax revenue comes from any of that stuff. The, um, Ivy Tech, same deal. We provide police, fire, mowing along Lee Road. I was shocked to see that, mowing the State Park. Lawrence provides all that. VFW and Legion posts, I think, are the same, in the same boat. But we, Lawrence, needs an all-hands effort really to get some payment in lieu of tax revenue that we all forego by having all this public resource available property. And, you know, for gosh sakes, DFAST is a terrorist target. So, the chief probably stays up at night with Ambien, you know, trying to figure out a contingency plan for that. But let's get some revenue from all these installations that we provide to the state of Indiana, to the federal government, to the state, uh, Department of Defense, all that kind of stuff. And I'm not talking about paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to do-nothing lobbyists. What we have to do is get ahold of state people with power on committees. Those are Republicans. So, we've got to pool our resources with people at Fishers, with people at Noblesville, get our Chief of Police to communicate with the Carmel City Police Department, to get revenues that it, because those people might have more sway than all of, uh, the Democrats on this council will ever have with the state government. So, let's, let's do that. And I know you all can do this, because I saw you all campaigning. You campaigned like there was no tomorrow and going door-to-door. You can get ten of your friends to email state legislators that serve on committees, that head chair committees. I'm not asking you to, you know, do the impossible here, but for gosh sakes, when you do this, the state legislature might ask you, well, you're giving away three million dollars a year to the, um, you know, the, the reuse authority. There's nothing to reuse anymore. We've got to look into, we've got a lawyer on staff here, we've got a lawyer on staff with the city, we pay quarter million dollars. If I was to offer a fifty thousand dollar bonus to this guy or the city attorney, if you could come up with a plan to get that three million dollars to stay within the city, we then can all budget more effectively for all the needs that we hear from every department in this city. So, you know, I'd encourage you all to do that.
Your time is up.
That's my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
The dog park had a great Halloween party.
Chris Coliver, Collier.
Good evening. Chris Collier, one-zero-one-zero-five, Hermosa Drive, Lawrence, Indiana. I have been following the council meetings for the last year and a half and have become increasingly frustrated and concerned about the state of our city. I'd like to share a few of those concerns and how the city has handled its finances over just the past year and a half. First, the ARPA funds. Those federal dollars were meant to make a real impact, have been fully spent, but there doesn't seem to have been any significant projects or visible results to show for it. We use those monies to fund budget items, i.e., the gas for public safety. We took it out of the budget, used money that was intended to fund capital projects. It was all smoke and mirrors. Now, it's gone. Next, the 2024 and 2025 budgets were rarely, if ever, made easily available to the public. Even tonight's amendments were not made available. You had to go up to the screen to see what was amended and did it match what you wanted done. That is not transparent. It is not easily for people to follow sitting in the public. That is not transparent, it is not easily for people to follow sitting in the public. This is a serious transparency issue. It also appears that the 2024 budget was overspent by nearly $4 million with council approval. That's a huge amount and the community deserves to know exactly where that money was spent. This administration inherited a very healthy operating reserve and in one and a half years, it has been almost depleted and will probably be gone by next year. And then, what do we do? We've now had three years of stormwater fees collected, yet no major projects have been completed since 2023. Residents are paying those fees and expect to see real progress. Now, I have to go off script because I'm very pleased that you did vote down giving elected officials raises. That money should be spent in other areas. I don't care that we're not keeping up with parity, that didn't seem to be an issue many years ago. And, at the very least, we need clarity. We need a full public accounting of how funds have been spent, what projects have been completed, what economic development are we pursuing? And why raises are being considered when essential infrastructure work remains undone. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our meeting. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.